I'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the USG 431 School Board to order. Well called. We have Jessie absent, and Neil absent. All right, move on to item three, adoption of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes. So I moved to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
They moved in second and all in favor? Passes five zero. All right, item four, opportunity for visitors. Any of you have your speech ready to go? I'm just kidding. Have to see the look up here a little while. All right, no visitors. We'll move on to item five, consent agenda. In your packet, you had the cash balance report, check registry, activities account, activity minutes from October 7th. The special meeting minutes from October 21st. And I don't think we have anything for donations.
No direct donation, no.
So if you haven't looked that over, you can look it over real quick.
The supplemental LOB, I noticed it's negative quite a ways. Are we waiting on a transfer or something?
Yeah, we're waiting for the deposit that just came in like literally Friday. So that just wasn't on there whenever it wasn't updated, so.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
One second. Tracy, did you get that? Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor? Passes five zero. Okay, we will move on to item six, old business. Item A, policy JBCC updates and dates.
So this is just an update to the policy JBCC that we approved last year. Taking into consideration the updates to the to JBCC in relationship to the legislation that was passed last April and May. You know, any of the items that are changes are red. And then the, the current one has been crossed out. Any additional pieces of information is also in red. And then towards the end, just the idea of, I know we'll never use it, but if we don't have it in there, we'll probably end up having it. In terms of students from outside the state. There's also an appeal process at the end of the policy as well. That appeal process is also in relationship to any of the legislation that was taking place last April. So this policy should get us through at least this legislative cycle. Major change that everybody should be aware of, out of district students can start applying as of January 1. Is the new, is the new open window for that.
Anybody have any questions?
Is the July 30th date, is that statutorily required for the notification?
Yes.
Okay, I just know we had some concerns last year because that put a lot of work into traditionally what is a month that not under contract.
And, and that, yeah, any of the dates that you're seeing in here is all statutory. Yep, that, that is one thing that was put into the original JBCC was dates, and those are all directly from state statute.
I would suggest just for the ease of administration, if you wanted to add that to your things to do before the month of July, when administrator, like when administrators are off, then since it says honor before July 30th and you have an application during the 15th. So I don't think it has to be in the policy, but if, if you, that fits into the to-do list.
So I mean, our procedure was, I mean, I think our procedure worked as well as, as any I heard. Just simply because we, we only took paper copies. We, we had a folder that stayed in my, you know, just either right outside my desk or, or office. Those just went in there. We went to them right after the, the deadline closed. And then within a week, everybody had been notified. So we, we didn't mess around with waiting until, until that, that end of July. Cause by the end of July, we were knee deep in, in budget and everything else. So, so we just, as soon as we were able to, we just went ahead and went through. And then, then whenever July 30th rolled around, when August 1 rolled around is when we, you know, we kind of shifted to going back to the way that we had always done it, have an administrative review.
Perfect. Yeah, and I know the load wasn't that great, so it wasn't.
No, I mean, we're talking five, five applications total. So I mean, we, and that's what I've heard from other districts around this area. The load wasn't, wasn't hardly anything more than what we had normally seen in the past.
And you'll continue the process of just doing the paper applications rather than?
Yeah, unless we find a really efficient way of doing electronic, I just think it's nice to have that, that hard copy.
Anybody else have any questions? I move to approve the changes to policy JBCC as presented.
I second.
Julie, that was you?
Me and Kevin. Take a break.
Then moved and seconded to approve the changes to policy JBCC. All in favor? Passes five zero. Okay, item B, contract for daycare site, second reading.
So again, you know, a few, few concerns last time that we met on some addendums that were mentioned in the contract that are, that are not on here. Those were in relationship to other templates that we used. So that was removed. The primary objective of this contract is to agree to the use of our ground to build the facility on. You know, other, other things such as the maintenance. Any of those types of things are still, you know, things that we will then negotiate with. You know, obviously they will upkeep their building. But custodial usage and those types of things are stuff that we'll continue to work through. We don't have a memorandum of, of understanding between us and the daycare. In terms of food service, again, this contract is just to use the ground to put the facility on. And then, you know, it does protect us as the district is first right to refusal to purchase the building in the event that the, that the daycare vacates that building as well. So, so we will, we will appraise it and then work through a fair market value in the event that the daycare no longer exists.
And Dawn has looked all of this over, correct?
Yeah, Dawn actually drafted this. Yep.
And just one last check, our custodial staff has no problem taking on that additional work for an additional building.
So we haven't even gotten to that point.
Okay, cause it's still in the.
It's still in there.
It's still in here, so if we approve it tonight, then this includes language on custodial services.
And we can table it and we can set, we can set that aside and approve it at a later date. If you so choose to do that. Does it specifically talk about daycare, or not daycare, but?
Custodial, yeah, under section 11.
I'm sorry, I thought it was just maintenance. Yep.
If we wait until December to finalize, we're not, I mean.
No, we're not, we're not jeopardizing anything.
Let's just go ahead and table it until December and then we can kind of all look it over again and just.
Should daycare determine that custodial services provided inadequate in the event of daycare, then in such case, daycare has the option to retain other custodial services at daycare on expense. So they, I mean, the daycare and Great Ben actually contracts their own custodial services.
Yeah, the way this was.
So the way this reads is.
Provide it unless they think we don't do an adequate job.
Yeah, we can, we can remove custodial services.
Yeah, and if we want to have a differentiated memorandum and understanding about custodial services.
Oh yeah, we can set that aside and make that, those addendums to, to this contract. Which is probably what we'll end up doing with food service and so, yeah, no, we can table this and then so just a quick motion to table and then I'll have it back to you.
Okay, I move to table the daycare contract discussion until December meeting.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Passes five zero. All right, item C, the Central Kansas Library Systems Policy.
So again, this is, we use the Central Kansas Library Systems for our, all of our libraries at the different buildings. Whether it be the organization or interlibrary loan. They provide grant services or grants to us for purchasing books throughout the year. And so this is just the annual agreement between the district and Central Kansas Library Services. So they could, they do a good job. And they help train some of our library aides too, from time to time on different things, so.
I move to approve the Central Kansas Library System Policies as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the Central Kansas Library System Policies. All in favor? Passes five zero. Okay, item D, HOSA School Club Approval.
You want to talk about that, Mr. Mike?
Yeah, I introduced this last month. That mostly is a student club for the students that are interested in going to see the medical field, whether it's engine, nursing, whatever. So it's real similar to the FBLA for the future business. Leaders of America, this would be a, a club for students interested in going to the medical field. And again, Claire Barton has pledged substantial amount of money to, for us to get this going. So I guess we just need an official approval to have this as an approved organization for our students. We'll look to have it run in full bore next school year, but we'd like to get things in motion this year to get it going, so.
And no cost to the students, right?
Correct.
I move to approve the creation of a HOSA High School Club as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Passes five zero.
Good deal.
All right, item seven, new business. Review of Board of Education Goals and Strategic Plan.
I just thought it was a good opportunity for us to take some time. Becky actually made the suggestion of, of having us look at what are, what are we doing in the strategic plan and, and how, how are we impacting that. So I did include under community, and then the admin helped me for more specific things within their building. So community, teacher, and student support. You can read through those, you know, beginning of school year in-service days, time with our DLTs and BLTs. Reality U Staff Co-Care Nights, HEPA, JCC, parent organizations, new curriculum. We've got, you know, just in my time here, English curriculum, science curriculum. The buildings are looking at math curriculum as we speak, family engagement nights. Monthly booster club meetings, leadership and community connections, classes during various activities bingo at, and I think that's Creo. Sorry about that. Tiered classes in ELA and math, modified homerooms to enhance social emotional learning. Adapted conduct cards to promote and celebrate student meeting expectations. That's a new initiative at the middle school that they're doing. Monthly Junior Cardinal Parent Club Meetings at the middle school, Veterans Day Program. Obviously one of, you know, the prized things. I mean, it's a great program. I've never been in a school that's had such a great Veterans Day program, so. And the Grandparents' Day and Scholastic Book Fair. In that area of retention and recruitment. Finished purchasing and installing clear touchboards in the entire district in each classroom. We've had great success at the Fort Hays State University Teacher Career Days and Collaboration Days. And Fort Hays has, has supported us over the last couple of years in making sure we're able to fill positions. Planning for staff wellness, that's a, that's something that we're planning for the spring semester. Communication with all four-year colleges in Kansas and Nebraska. Joel's done a great job with that and, and beating the bushes and we've, we've even reached out to many in Oklahoma as well. Trying to find those good teachers. Using non-traditional methods to hire our candidates, that's been just the way of the world right now, and we're not unique in that, but we've had good success. And I attribute a lot of that to our administration, really vetting the people that we're, we're taking a look at and putting in classrooms. So implement and building new, new teacher orientation. I know in each building, they're doing something, we're trying to get something going district-wide, it just hasn't taken off just yet. So, and we've got good supportive administration, so. Make this a little bit smaller, yes. Community or communications and accountability, using newsletters, social media, text, email. Seems like every time we turn around, we've got something else going out. Our monthly admin check-ins, I've been working with each of our admin each month. Gets me out into the buildings as well. Middle school monthly newsletters, board updates and sent to staff. You know, our administration does a great job after our board meetings of going ahead and updating them on important information. Weekly Outlook emails that go out. High school weekly sent to staff and students as well as, you know, different things sent out via social media. Increasing the use of our Thrill Share, that's been a, a good tool that I think all of our administration has used. HMS Weeklys sent to teachers, daily bulletins sent to students. That's on, that daily bulletin's on Power School, so is it still on Power School, Joel? Okay, so I mean, those are things that, that are, like each of our students, when they check their emails. Right? When you check your emails, they get those things. Using the website and social media platforms to share information, weekly walkthroughs, our administration has, has jumped into that. And, you know, really, really taken on the idea of the importance of, of getting into classrooms often and regular. You know, Roosevelt Elementary, social emotional monthly newsletters and monthly calendars that are going out. So trying to hit lots of different areas to, to, to look at that community, teacher, student support, retention and recruitment and community accountability. So I think they're doing a good job at each of the buildings. Any questions about any of those?
Thank you for putting all that together.
Yeah, now the admin definitely helped with that, so.
Been doing, so appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? Okay. We will move on to item B, Review of District Emergency Plan.
So you are able to access the district emergency plan. I have spent some time. Last year, the administration went to some meetings hosted by ISDAC. Talking about the emergency plans and the admin, the admin actually went through a rubric to look at the different functions and, and parts of the emergency plan. And ours did not score well. It was very basic, very bare bones. It's still pretty basic, but it's simple to look at and find what we need. And that's, to me, that's really important, cause if it's 45 pages long and every inch is covered in words, then when we are in emergency, it's going to be much more difficult to use. So, you know, we are going to take some time administratively with our building emergency plan or emergency people and take a look at the revised version. And then come back to the board with a, with a, with a final draft for you to approve. Again, as we've done in the past, it's been a few years since we've done it, we will go into executive session. This is not necessarily public information. We want it to be, you know, we don't want to share everything. Our students, especially the high school students, I know are very versed in, in the, in many aspects of the emergency plan. You know, as we go through drills and different things like that, but that's not something we want to put out 100% public just to protect our students. And that's the main aspect of, of this whole plan, is to protect the students. In relationship to that, I am continuing to look for emergency management system that would help with the notifications. So that may lead into some modifications to this in the future, to this plan in the future. But it will add to the plan, not replace the plan. That's not the intent of any of the systems that we're looking at. It's to add to and, and to make it more effective. And so one of the aspects of, of the primary system that I'm looking at right now is the plan will actually be embedded into it. So it'll, we'll take an electronic version and upload it in there. So it'll be accessible to our staff in the event of an emergency. So take some time to review this, look over it. Couple areas that were added were some areas of transportation. That was, that was brought to our attention last year with not only a, a accident that we had, but also with the Russell accident. So the other piece is what happens after an emergency. We want to be prepared for the mental, the mental health of our students and staff after an emergency as well. So there, there's that in, in there as well. So please take a look at that and then we will review this hopefully in December.
Patrick, I have one small thing that I saw, that's a pretty small thing, but could just be an efficiency thing. On page six and page 22, just on the role of secretaries, on page six, there had been mentioning pulling a photo of the student. Impossible, shouldn't we be able to pull that off of Power School?
Yep.
So I didn't know if like that could be added to the role of secretaries to pull a photo, a current photo of the student.
Yes, so right now, if we were to have a, you know, an evacuation event. We, we would need to have paper copies of our access of Power School.
This was for the student away on page six.
Okay, okay.
So, and then page 22 was just general responsibilities of staff. So I thought that would be an easy one, cause it said when possible, but every student has a photo in their Power School file.
Almost everyone, yeah.
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 And then my other question was before December, have our school counselors had the opportunity to review the after report?
They will be involved in that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for such, like, it's very clear on the action steps and roles and responsibilities, so.
And most of that was already here before I got here. That's probably, but that was the model that really made more sense, cause I looked at two or three other models and it was just words and there was lots of words. And so, you know, we all react differently and a lot of words would not be good for me in an emergency like that, so. So I think, I think it's a good model for us to keep that clear, concise, trying to keep everything to one page as well. Obviously, there are some things that can't be just one page, but the idea of just keeping it as concise as possible, but still covering everything is important. You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item eight, reports, a KISA School Improvement Report. Do you believe we have some presenters today?
Thank you for the slides.
You're welcome. Just let me know what you want me to click on.
We can start with this. So we're into our new KISA accreditation. Our first step is creating an action plan. And if you see the list of fundamentals, we had to choose one of those to focus on. So we chose standards alignment. It's been quite a few years since we have gone through the state standards, picked them apart and made sure we're teaching directly each one of them. So we're going to focus on that. And then on the structures column, we pick two to three, three of the most structures that will support us in our goal of getting standards alignment. So we chose professional collaboration and professional learning. And collaboration on grade level, content level, and then between buildings also. So that we know, like, if math teachers are meeting at our building, we're also meeting with Lincoln, seeing what we're carrying over from there to ours. And then to the high school also, so that we're we've got that going up and down, that we know we're covering all those standards. Then we'd like to target our professional learning, so that when we do have professional learning time, it is targeted to something that we desperately need, something that will help us. And we talked about moving some of those times that we do that, instead of just at the beginning of the year, spreading it out so that we have so many focuses at the beginning of the year, we're not losing good information by having something very important at the beginning of the year. Some of the ways that we chose these structures, I'll let London describe our process to you.
Yeah, and I think too, part of the fundamentals was, it was almost easier to figure out what we don't need to do as much as what we do need to do. I mean, with structured literacy, we felt like our district's done a good job of getting a lot of teachers to the letters training, which is going to become real important. So we felt like that was, that one was pretty good. Balanced assessment, we felt like we do a lot of screeners for our students already. And we have a pretty good understanding of needs of students. And quality instruction, we kind of felt just like embeds itself within standards alignment. So that kind of was the one that stood out. Like we said, it's been a while. We're going to try to align horizontally and vertically there, so. But as far as choosing those, when we went to ISDAC, there was a group of nine of us that make up our KISA group. So these were the six things they wanted us to look at. So while we were there, we each did this radar graph and we evaluated ourselves on our own building. And then as a group of nine, we came back together and looked at where we felt as a district leader on each one of those, just from our KISA group. Then from there, we took those back and we did the same thing with our BLTs. So this were our building leadership teams. And then here, what, last month?
Yeah.
We, we came together again and brought everything from our BLTs and kind of narrowed it down to where we are now for professional collaboration and professional learning. So and again, this one was kind of almost easier to, to decide what we didn't need to do. You know, we've got, they're really working on the new evaluation. They've had some training, we saw administrators in our buildings already last week going over that. Resource allocation, we felt like as far as from a teaching standpoint, the biggest resource we need was time. So that kind of embeds itself under professional collaboration, more than anything. It felt like we have a really good family, community and business partnership already, we just keep that going. You know, our elementary, middle schools did a great job with the tiered system and supports. So we didn't really, we keep that going, we're doing, doing good there. So it kind of leaves professional collaboration and professional learning kind of ties all back into that standards alignment. Get those high quality instructional materials and strategies. Get those high quality instructional materials and strategies into our classrooms, so. I kinda feel like this rounded KISA is a lot more user friendly than what the last one does.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you know, when we get together and have those in service, we talk about things within our classrooms, our buildings and our district that we need to fix. And this just kinda gives us a way to go about doing that, you know, a lot easier.
They gave us sixty days to get our action plan together and then we meet again and turn that in. So I feel like they keep us on a timeline, keep us moving. And we've gotten away from the SMART goals and we're just focused on this improvement model, which I think helps.
Do you want that? Or you, you guys did a great job.
Do you have any questions? Thank you for all the time invested. This is a very beautiful summary, but I know that there was a lot of work.
All right, thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. One of the things that we've really gotten back to on the the KISA or the school improvement is getting that up and down communication. Um, I I'm not, I'm not the only superintendent that I've had this conversation with, but we got to the end of the last KISA cycle and it just fell on the administrators to just write a big narrative. And the more words you put into the narrative, um, the more likely it was that you got approved. And we we got approved. You know, we kinda, we all got the email and we're like, oh, hey, look at that. Uh, we got approved, but, um, we've really done a great job now of our DLT and the BLTs are meeting. Um, that's why they they came to you to to show you our steps that we've we've gone through. Uh, we've got a meeting coming up on the the eighteenth, uh, next Monday, uh, at Lincoln. There's been some information throughout, uh, about that. We're trying to get community involvement as well. Um, then the BLTs go back down to the teachers. So it's it's up and down, uh, that flow of communication. And that that's really the essential part of of any school improvement is making sure everybody's on the same page. Thank you, ladies.
Mrs. Callen, I guess you're up.
All right, so I have to share the most exciting news first. Uh, Lincoln had one hundred percent attendance at our parent teacher conferences. So that was great to have all the parents in and show how committed they are to helping our students. Um, part of that, our teachers really worked with parents to rearrange any schedule that they needed to. Our secretaries worked hard to schedule everyone. And we also offered babysitting to help some of that barrier with families. And we watched a hundred and twenty-nine siblings that day. And really helped our parents to be able to concentrate on the conferences, uh, with the other students. So, um, it was a great night. Uh, it's been a while since my last report. Um, and that time at Lincoln, the fifth grade got to visit the state fair. And the second grade went to the wetlands and we put, we hosted the Claire Barton Hospital Vaccine Day. Uh, we've been full swing with our new reading curriculum. Uh, the feedback has been really positive. The teachers have really enjoyed it. Um, we've been receiving some extra training on that and we'll have two more this year that the teachers will go to. Um, we've been really focusing on, um, including everybody to get the basics of that training in. Um, so we have all similar reading practices. Uh, Hepa had our Labor Day Carnival. And we also started a new Renaissance reading program. Uh, what happened, uh, we went to repurchase reading counts this year, which is our program that the students read books and take comprehension tests on and they earn points uh, towards a goal. Um, it actually got discontinued. Um, we tried to convince them to keep it because we were really happy with it, um, but they didn't. Uh, so we went searching for a new one, um, found some other programs, but they didn't have very many tests. And then we stumbled upon Renaissance reading. Um, and we started that and it's been very successful. And it has a lot of reports, it adjusts based on students' interests and really helps them be engaged with reading. So, uh, fits right along with our goals for our reading curriculum, um, so that's been good to have. Uh, we also had our anti-bowling spirit week in our first honor roll. And probably the cutest honor roll we've had, we had it on Halloween.
Yeah.
And, uh, all the students came in their costumes and it was it was pretty cute. Um, but really proud of all of our students' hard work this first nine weeks. Uh, we have our Hepa meeting on Monday at six-thirty. And December fifth is our second and third grade music concert. And that will be at the high school auditorium. And January twenty-third will be in our fourth and fifth grade music concert. Any any questions?
All right, thank you. All right, middle school, Mr. Berman.
Good evening, everybody. As Chris has said, this month's big event was our parent teacher conference. Um, winning the night with sixty-eight, uh, percent attendance. Um, we had sixty-two percent, uh, the parents that showed up. Uh, but, uh, we, uh, send out, sent out our progress checks that we do. Uh, we've done the last couple of years and we send those out about a week at a time. And, you know, they're filled out by all the teachers. Uh, gives them a little up, gives the parents a little update. I'm sure some of you got them, uh, about how they're doing in their classes. Um, and then, you know, if they're all doing, if if they're doing great in all their classes, then you can determine if you need to come and and talk to the teachers or if there's ju- you know, a certain class that your child might be struggling, you know, you can you can determine, you know, to spend more time with that teacher. Um, just just allows to be a little bit more efficient. Um, so we had that, and like I said, it set about sixty-eight percent. Um, we also, uh, our seventh and eighth graders got invited today to go to the high school to attend their annual Veterans Day program. Um, the high school does an excellent job, just as, uh, Mr. Kravis says, if if any of you've ever had a chance or do get a chance to attend it, I would recommend it. It is, uh, pretty special and and, you know, fun to be a part of. Uh, we're also gonna have our BLT meeting tomorrow. Uh, we're gonna discuss several items. One of them's gonna be, uh, uh, modifications to our homework help program. Right now, Monday through Thursday, kids are allowed or can totally voluntary come in after school, uh, get help with their homework. Um, we're we're looking at making it, uh, mandatory if a student has missing assignments. Uh, we're gonna iron out all the details tomorrow. Um, but, you know, it would involve, you know, me running a missing assignments report through Power School, find out which assignments in classes the student's missing. Um, and then those students would have to call home, you know, we'd run that on Friday. You know, and then Monday, those students have to call home and tell their parents, say, I gotta stay after, um, get this homework, you know, to 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 finish their assignments. Um, and then we'd work with a student, the student's teachers and the and the homework help supervisor. Because there might be an instance where it says it's missing, but they've turned it in, the teacher just hasn't graded yet, so the the they would come in, hey, I got that done. She says it's graded, I said, well, go get it, go get, go to that teacher, get some proof that it's done. And then if that's the case, then they're good to go and, you know, things like that. Uh, again, it's just another opportunity to help our kids, uh, get in and understand the importance of doing their doing their work and, you know, hopefully if they come with the understanding, if I just do it when it's assigned, I want it to come in after school, that's the, uh, the the ultimate goal, so. Other things that are going on right now, um, uh, we got our, the regional K conference, uh, is this Friday on the fifteenth. Maya Howling, Riley Crawford, Christine Crutcher, Ella Linsner, Elena Steiner, uh, Brinley Meyer, Adler Wilkins and Keaton Cass will be attending that, um, with Miss with Miss Smith. Um, basketball started, is in high gear. Our kids played three games last week. Um, they're at Hillsborough or Heston tonight, excuse me, and then we'll host Reno Valley on Thursday. Um, then the following week, we'll have Hillsborough at home on Monday in Halsted. Uh, we'll be at Halsted on Thursday to finish out the month. And then we'll hit Chris, uh, Thanksgiving break and come back, get ready to rock and roll again on there. Um, and finally, our seventh and eighth grade vocal kids, uh, have been working on a musical called Pirates. Um, if you guys came to the middle school, high school vocal concert earlier, they performed a couple songs uh, with that 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 they that are in that musical that night and they will be performing the musical uh, this weekend at the showcase, so. Got a lot going on right now. Uh, any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, high school activities, Mr. Kraft. You do have his report on here as well, if you weren't sure if he was gonna make it tonight.
Good evening. Yeah, like I said, I I didn't know if I was gonna make it tonight, so you guys do have a copy of my report. Um, I even gonna add a couple of things on there. I was in Topeka all day today. Uh, we had our KIA triple A fall workshop. Um, we had a bunch of sessions throughout the day on on leadership and they talked about esports, which is a thing that's up and coming. Um, talked about a a program that's a platform for our for our coaches to streamline all the courses they have to take and everything. Um, one of the big complaints from from the athletic administrators is the amount of, uh, busy work that we require coaches to do every year just to be able to coach and and, uh, even more so are rule ten coaches who, you know, they've they've got their own real jobs. Um, so, uh, we're trying to find ways to help streamline that, streamline that, make it easier, make it uh, cheaper on them, some districts. That's all on those coaches to pay for all that stuff. Thankfully, here, we don't do that. We we help take care of those things, which is a which is a great benefit to those coaches, so I do appreciate that. But, um, all in all, it was a great day, so. Um, onto my report, uh, as most of you know, fall sports have just about come to a conclusion. Football's still playing in the playoffs. Um, we're in the final eight, which, you know, any any team sport, the final eight makes it to state. So, you know, with that being said, all of our fall sports um, had either individuals or teams competing at state this year. That's the first time in my four years here, um, which is pretty exciting. So, you know, girls tennis, um, was regional runner-up, um, at Joaquinie. And then we sent two girls to state, Claire Crutcher and Reese Merlu, uh, Reese placed twelfth in singles. It was, uh, it was a great day for both girls. Unfortunately, they had to play each other in the elimination, um, which was kinda kinda tough to see, but, uh, the girls handled it really well. Um, and they, uh, they played great both days. Um, girls golf, we sent one to state, um, Kate Shai has made to state in, uh, girls golf, cross country. You know, another great year, we had one girl go to state, uh, Tiana, I believe, placed seventeenth. We had two boys, Camden and, uh, Charlton and Brody Rosman. Uh, Camden got, uh, ninth, got in the top ten. Um, and then, uh, Brody got fourteenth, I believe. So, you know, great job for our cross-country team. Um, and then, you know, girls volleyball had a great season. Um, you know, we were, we were up in the third set against, uh, Nemha Central to make it to the championship game and just couldn't hold on and, uh, ended up going, playing the third place game. The girls just dominated, we kept over the plaque, so. I'm extremely proud of our, uh, our girls, our coaches and and really all of our coaches and all of our athletes right now. Um, done a great job. Uh, this week is fall buffer week for the high school. Um, you know, can't have any school activities, practices, workouts, uh, for the week, uh, exception is football, obviously, because they're still playing in the playoffs, so. Um, all of our coaches are very aware of that and and do a pretty good job of policing that, so. Winter sports start on Monday. Um, don't have numbers yet. Um, talking to the coaches, it looks like, well, wrestling numbers will be up, on the girls and boys. Uh, boys basketball, Texas men have great numbers. Um, girls basketball will be down a little bit, but we graduated a lot of seniors. We got a freshman girls class coming in that's heavy on the wrestling side, so. Um, their numbers will be down a little bit, but, uh, still look to be to be good to be competitive, so. Um, if you're up at the AC, take a look at trophy case. We spent last year rounding up state trophies around the high school building and, you know, most of them were in Coach Cooper's classroom. Uh, but we got them all together, at least all that we could find and got them up to the trophy case at the AC, got it all reorganized, so. Um, you know, it took a morning to do that, but I think it it looks nice, it's organized, you can see everything we have for the most part. Um, there's a couple that aren't up there. Um, but those are the two that, uh, Mr. Bill Kimball is a part of and and Joel's got a that we'll call a little shrine at the high school there as you walk in the gym for for, uh, Mr. Kimball, so, uh, both of those trophies are in there if anybody asks or notices they're not there, so. Um, lastly, I talked with you guys last year. Um, Joel and I had had talked over and over again about putting banners up in the AC that that, um, has our league championships and maybe our regional, sub-state, depending on the sport. Um, as well as we have championship banners up there, there's some that still need to be put up that aren't up there, um, as well as doing runner-up in third place. Um, I've got a bid from one company right now, um, to do those. I'm waiting on another company, I have a local company, I'm gonna get a bid from them as well. To, uh, to do all that, um, none of that's gonna I don't, doesn't have to come from you guys, we we have the funds and high school activities take care of it, that's part of the extra funds we've raised and banner sales and and live stream and all that's gonna go um, go to this project, which will be a pretty substantial project when it's done, but um, Joel and I both feel it's very important that we we show the 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 pride of our of our school, our activities and our sports. And and it won't be just sports, I mean, anything we have for for our activities, scholars, ball forensics, debate, any of those, they're gonna be up there as well, so. Um, you know, we just wanna show our tradition a little more, we got a great big building, we got plenty of space to do it, so. Just wanna put that out there, we're getting, we're getting ever closer. My goal is to have it done before the school year's over, so. Anyways, anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item E, superintendent report, Mr. Kraft.
So January sixth, we do have some specific time, um, built into the schedule for, um, uh, getting back together after the Christmas break. Uh, we'll kick that off with, um, uh, school improvement overview. Uh, highlight the work that the, uh, DLT and BLTs have been doing. Uh, we're also going to partner with Clara Barton to do a lab fair. Um, uh, we'll do it early, um, so that they can come fasted and can be able to, uh, do that lab fair. And we'll go ahead and take care of that, uh, cost for that basic, um, um, panel of labs that they're gonna, that they're gonna do. And then, uh, Ms. Dolacek, our our district nurse, is working on putting together a wellness contest from that will run from January sixth to spring break. Um, we didn't wanna focus around weight loss. Um, some of us have struggles with, um, trying to lose weight, myself included. Um, so we just wanted to make it around wellness and about the the, you know, the the benefits of of having a healthy lifestyle, so. Um, so it didn't all have to be around weight loss and those types of things. So we wanna kick off the year in a positive manner, uh, that way on that January sixth. That'll be about a two-hour timeframe and then they'll have work time in the classrooms the rest of the day. Um, November nineteenth, the auditors are gonna be in the building. Um, you know, finalizing and and asking questions and working through the the audit with, um, those of us down at the district office. Um, in terms of daycare updates, we don't have a lot of daycare updates. Uh, one of the things that's kind of hanging things up is we actually need a separate address um, for the daycare, so we're working through that process with the county and with a, um, uh, civil engineer, uh, to get that separate address, uh, for that site. Um, we have had some issues with our play clock. Um, might have noticed it if you've been at the ballgames the last couple of weeks. Uh, we are aware of that, we are working on it, but it's also brought up the idea that we're gonna have somebody come in and do an update, not an update, but just a checkover of our scoreboards. Um, we we run almost all of our scoreboards wirelessly. Um, so we wanna make sure that that, um, all of the components are up to date and everything. Our activity center has new, um, panels, the the actual panels at the scorer's table. Um, but some of the other buildings don't, so we wanna make sure that those are up up to date. Um, so we're working with Fair Play and and another company to to come in and do that. Mr. Kraft and I have been, uh, working on wrestling mats. We have, uh, three, yeah, three that are at least fifteen years old, if not twenty plus. Um, so we are in the process of of looking at replacing probably two of those this year um, in the in and then getting a rotation ready to go so that we don't end up, you know, um, you know, letting those slip through the cracks. Um, you know, we wanna make sure that not only is that an important thing for injuries, but also infections and, um, um, you know, cleanliness, uh, especially in wrestling. So I've been working with him on that. Um, and he's working on getting prices for not only some of the competition mounts, but also And he's working on getting prices for not only some of the competition mats, but also practice mats to, to be able to use on a daily basis. So. We'll continue to keep you updated on that. The high school auditorium, I've been keeping you updated on the, 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 the issues that we've had. I do want to let you know, we, we did get two, two bids. We worked with Par Sound and Lighting from Great Bend. They are the ones that will begin to work on the progress. That was, all of that total was less than the 20,000 for the, for the, for the, for a need for a bid. Hop Sound, which is out of McPherson, they actually took over a company out of Hutchinson as well during COVID. They shot us a, a bid and it was well over 50,000. So we did stick with Par out of Great Bend. So they were, they were under 20,000. So. And, you know, I feel good about it. You know, Gary has done a great job of working with us in the past of, of doing some updates to some of our lighting and, and so, and a local person. So that's always good. And then finally, one of the things that we'll begin to work on that we have to have in place is the state legislature passed a bill that did require all districts to have a cardiac plan documentation for the 25, 26 school year. So there are several templates out there. I've received templates from the gentleman that we hire AEDs and then KSB and, and KSDE are all putting together templates as well. We will administratively begin to, you know, decide which template or what would best tailor to us. And I'll give you some more specifics as to what we actually have to do in terms of, of meeting the requirements of this cardiac plan. We were talking earlier today in our administrative meeting. You know, and, and I'll ask the question to others as, as, and feel free to chime in. We may build this into our emergency plan, but we may also have a separate document. You know, because we will have to turn this into the state on an annual basis. So it, it's something that we'll probably include in our emergency plan. But for, for compliance issues, we'll probably have a sec, separate document that, that will be, you know, published at the state, at the state level. So. I'll bring more details on that to, you know, a later meeting. But just so all of you are aware, that is going to be a requirement that we'll have to have for that. So, and, you know, we are, we are using, we did receive a Safe and Secure grant. So part of all of the Safe and Secure grant that we, we received will update the remaining AEDs in the district. And so we, all of our AEDs in the district will be less than four years old. Whenever we get that done. Some of the AEDs, not that we have in place right now, but some of them that we had three or four years ago were over 15 years old. So we've, we've phased all of the oldest ones out and we're getting the cycle so that we, we're not, we're not, I mean, they, they still worked or they said they still worked, but some of the capacitors and components in them could have failed if they would, would have been needed. So we don't want that to happen. So I, I think we're in good shape in terms of the AEDs if, if there was a cardiac emergency that took place at any of our buildings. So. Questions or comments?
Is all the staff and teachers trained to use the AED and certified in CPR?
So all, all of our coaches are certified in first aid and CPR. All of our staff have the opportunity to take CPR in first aid. And then the AED part of it, they get that if they take the first aid. But we have not focused on having all of them trained on the AEDs. But that's definitely something.
That might be something good to look into, having all the teachers and staff being certified.
I think that's going to be a part of that cardiac plan that's coming. So I, I would agree with that.
Anything else for Superintendent?
Nope. That's all I got.
All right. We'll move on to F Legislative Report.
There is, later this week, there is a legislative luncheon. None of our representatives are attending, so I chose not to attend. Tori Blue will be our new senator. This, this coming, I think they take office in April officially, maybe in January. I'm not sure of that date. And then Sherri Brantley will be our new representative in the House. So, so those are, those are a few changes that we'll see in the House and, and so we'll see how it goes.
All right. Item G, Board Member Reports.
Madam President, I just want to also say a shout out. I got to attend the first part of the Veterans Day ceremony and just echo that that's a great thing. And one thing that wasn't highlighted that I think is really unique for you guys to understand is that not only do you have a veterans program, but you have your elementary schools and your middle school, having all the students come together, having seventh and eighth grade, but having the kindergartners sing and having the third graders write letters as a way to do that cross-district is really unique and something really special and something. And to have that many community members show up for a program like that is really special and unique. So hats off to everyone for a really, really great program.
Mrs. Wright and her student students take all credit for that.
You do a great job with that, though. I've been to a couple of them. So it's very nice. All right. And this weekend is the KASB Annual Conference. Myself, Kevin, Jesse, face, and then Mr. Kravis will be attending that. So hopefully we get a lot of good information.
Yep. Looking forward to it.
All right. We'll move on to item nine, consideration of district personnel. I think we will go into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss personnel.
Non-elected personnel.
Okay. Non-elected personnel. So we will do that for 10 minutes and we will resume back here at 8:08.
Yeah.
Okay. I move to go into executive session. Okay. It's been moved in the second then. All in favor? Passes five zero. Thank you, guys. We're not going to make you stay for all time. You got your hour in, right?
You got your hour. Barely. No, you guys have to stay until eight o'clock.
I'm sure they could entertain you for a few minutes, you know. Coming out of executive session with the following motion, I move to accept the nomination of Travis Johnson for the position of Boys Assistant Wrestling Coach for High School. It's been, Kevin, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor? Passes five zero. Anything else? All right. I move to adjourn. Second. Been moved in seconded to adjourn and all in favor? Passes five zero. Thank you, guys, for coming. Kevin, I will probably see you on Friday. I'll be in Wichita.